All right, good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order if everyone would please stand for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, good evening, everybody. School's out and it's a hot day, very hot. Everybody's had a chance to look at our open session minutes that were provided. If there are no changes, I will entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Everybody's had a chance to review our closed session minutes that were provided. If there are changes, we'll make those in closed session. If not, I will entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda tonight?
No, sir.
Okay, here none, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, we have no public comment tonight, so we're going to move right into our superintendent's report.
All right. Thank you, and welcome, everyone, on this hot afternoon. Just to give you a few highlights since our last meeting, we had a successful, just successfully concluded our 24-25 school year, topped off by a fantastic graduation ceremony. Congratulations to Ms. Lanchi and her staff on making really a fantastic ceremony. We appreciate board members and staff were able to attend that. Of course, we also had promotion ceremonies at all the schools, and everything was really nicely done. The day is following graduation, we celebrate our staff during our end-of-year recognition event. We recognized service awards and retirement recognitions for those who have, for years of service to the district. Announced our unsung hero award this year, it's Ms. Tammy Spain, very well deserved. She's done a tremendous amount this past year. In the background, just really making sure that our transition to Infinite Campus was smooth, and our transition was much smoother than many districts across the state. We recognized our teachers of the year for each school. If you didn't hear, Mr. Chris Gray is the teacher of the year for Pamlico Primary School. Ms. Dawn Wilson is Fred Anderson's teacher of the year. Ms. Megan Brooks is the teacher of the year at the middle school. And Ms. Jessica Nunley, the teacher of the year at the high school. Currently, we're actually working to fill vacancies across the district. We're also navigating challenges that come with not filling some vacancies due to extremely limited state and federal budgets, which you're aware of that situation. It's not, not unique to Pamlico County, but it's definitely something we're having to do our best to work through. This past Monday night, the Pamlico County Commissioners did pass the budget ordinance that included our budget. Ms. Altman will be sharing more of that later in tonight's meeting. We have summer programs underway. Summer reading camp's taking place at the primary school. Camp Learn a Lot is happening at Fred Anderson, which serves in our rising fourth and fifth graders. Really, this is a program, it's in our second year of doing this. It's in partnership with the Education Committee of the Pamlico County NAACP. It's really, the participation has doubled. I think we had 12, 12 participating last year. We have 24 this year, and it's fantastic. And so we're really thankful for that partnership and everything that they've done to make this possible, and this opportunity for our students. If you have driven down Anderson Drive in the past few weeks, you have seen a major transformation over at that construction site. And with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Henry Rice to come up and give us a update on the progress, because there is a lot of progress happening over at the new school site, construction site.
Good evening. Can you see up there? Okay, good. Yeah, we had a lot going on since last month. I believe it was May 19th when we met. I think we had a slab of concrete and some steel beams. So there's a lot more there now, and I'm going to show you some of that. Again, we started on October 18th, when I noticed to proceed, began construction November 7th, and here's our progress report for tonight. Holocore, which are the planks that are the floor between the first floor and the second floor, they started on June 9th. A topping slab, which is slab of concrete, will go on top of those. They will be starting that probably next week. If you'll notice, when you leave, not the gym areas, but the next part down, you'll see some framing where they're starting to frame up for the concrete to be poured on top of it. They'll be topping out the gyms, they're doing that right now. They're putting the steel beams up, so eventually, before long, there'll be a roof on the gyms. Coming up in the next two weeks, they'll start the masonry on the second floor. That's the cinder blocks that you see on, what you're seeing out here now. Geo wells, they're approximately 65% complete. And the water sewer and fire is nearing completion, the lines that are outside of the building. I'll have some pictures of some of this stuff in a few minutes. And the library demo and old school, the old school abatement, that started this morning. And again, we'll hope to be completed by May 6th, and demo have a parking lot for June 15th, start on June 15th, and then occupancy for the beginning of the school year, the year after, next school year. So now some pictures. Here's your library, that was the library. Couple more of these pictures. This is the water sewer lines that are outside around the building. That's what they were doing here. They've not hit water. This is all the rain that we've had. Here's our holocore crane. You've seen the big crane. You can see it from Alliance and Stone Wall and everywhere else when it's, when it's up in the air. It's pretty cool. And he's swinging a plank right here. This is a truckload of the holocore planks. It would pull into where it is right here. High School Drive is right here, in front of it. The crane would pick up right off the truck and set them right on the building. As soon as he would unload, while they're placing the last plank that was on the truck, another truck is in the process of pulling in. It was like a never-ending cycle throughout the day. Only took about two weeks to do that whole, whole floor. Here's just a couple of pictures here. I'm swinging some, and he's place-setting them here. And you can look close, you can see some numbers and things on here. That's when they put them, when they made them, they put them so they'll fit back together like a puzzle. Here is, he's setting another one right here on top of this, on the second floor. What we're looking at right here, this is the concession stand window outside of the gym area. It will be the concession stand. And this stuff right here is your restrooms on each side of the concession stand. He's welding some joists above. This looks like probably the weight room. And he's, these are bridging choices between the gym and coach's office and the locker rooms. And this is looking north. You can see the old high school here. There'll be a wall down here at the end eventually. They have to leave some places open so they can get their equipment in and out. Here's a picture of a classroom hallway. The classrooms are over here, and you can kind of make out a little hallway here, but all this area will, will be open, like your media center and learning commons area. This is one of the classrooms, kind of the normal-sized classroom right here. Eventually, when they first started, they had a road, a block about that high, just one, and it did not look very big at all. It's kind of nervous. And then now they got the walls, it looks quite a lot bigger. And then eventually, they will put a drop ceiling in, and it'll make it look even bigger then, so it's pretty cool. This room's bigger. This is a science classroom. Here's looking back in those learning commons and media center areas from different directions. That's the concession stand window that we looked at a while ago. And this is a restroom area on the other end of the building. And that's all I have for this month. Any questions?
Can you tell us about that topping off ceremony real quick?
I forgot, thank you. Topping off ceremony, obviously, I don't know what days of the week.
Thursday, July 31st.
It is Thursday, July 31st. I think I said Wednesday in the first email.
Yes.
We'll do it at 12:15. That way, if some of you have to work and you're nearby, you could possibly come on your lunch hour. What we'll do is, we'll meet over here at some location. I'm not sure where it'll be exactly, but they will place the last beam. And I think there'll be some signings here where you can write your name on the beam and stuff, just a traditional type thing. There'll be a few, speakers say a few things, and just kind of recognize the milestone of moving on up to a different part of the construction process. There'll be lunch for everybody that's involved, and MetCon is taking care of all that. Anything else?
That's it. I appreciate it. Thank you for that report. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Rice? Thank you. That essentially also concludes the superintendent report. Does any board member have anything they'd like to share at this time, board member time?
I want to congratulate the principals and everybody involved in the graduation ceremonies. I'd like to thank Ms. Lanchi for allowing me to continue my tradition. I participate in serving the students, the seniors, breakfast. One of the most impressive things about that was hearing them say, yes, please, thank you, no, sir, yes, sir. It was very impressive, and I always enjoy participating in that event.
I concur with Mr. Gibbs about the graduation ceremonies, the middle school and the high school. They were both wonderful. The students all did a great job, and they seemed so happy. It was great. Y'all did a great job with both of those. I also wanted to say the scholarship awards program was wonderful. That was really amazing to see all the awards and the monetary scholarships that the students received. That was, that's just, it's great. I love that. And lastly, the end-of-the-year celebration for the faculty and staff. I really enjoyed that, because it's so nice to recognize and pay some attention to our teachers and our faculty and staff members and administrators, and see them get recognized for all their hard work and dedication. So thanks to all of you, too. That was great. It was a good end of the year.
I just want to say again, thank you for everything. Thank you for making an impact, not just in Pamlico schools, but around the community as well. We appreciate everything that you're doing, all that you will continue to do to make a difference in Pamlico County.
I just enjoyed graduation again. I think one of the most entertaining introductions of students walking across the stage. You did a good job, Ms. Potter. Yep, that was good. Also, if y'all haven't looked at, school year's ended. I don't do Facebook, but I do go on there and look at stuff for the schools. Elizabeth, you've been doing a great job with statistics that you're putting out there. That, that shows what all of y'all are making happen. I'm glad you put the pictures up of the library coming down. I did attend the ribbon cutting for the new library. If you have not been in there yet, it's very impressive. It does not look like already's inside. I can promise you that. It's, I was impressed. Great turnout. It was standing room only in there, but thanks to the friends of the library, Senator Sanderson, and others. We do have a couple board members that serve on that board, so if you haven't had a chance to look at the new library, it's kind of funny how timing things fell in place with our construction project, that construction project. Everything's just kind of fallen in place like it should, so. Any more board comments?
I want to acknowledge also, Ms. Minor, I forgot, please forgive me, but welcome. Yay, and congratulations on your new position.
Anything else? All right, we're going to move on to our consent agenda. We've got several items that are shown on there. We can vote on them individually. If not, I will entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
You got a question?
Can I just ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Without pulling it out?
If you have discussion, you have to pull it out.
Oh, never mind. I'm talking to Ms. Davis, babe.
Okay. All right, so I entertain a motion to approve as presented. Y'all are quiet. Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand, and motion carries. All right, moving on to, let's see, instruction. We don't have anything on instruction. We'll move on to finance.
Good evening. We made it almost to the end of June. We're closing everything out and working on a new year while trying to close out the end of the year. So I have a couple things for you tonight. The first one is school nutrition bids that I am presenting for Ms. Mancinus. The school nutrition department basically is in a consortium with several other counties. It's called the Coastal Coalition Group. And that group provides basically the guidance and the contracts and all the purchasing power for several of the local counties in our area. So it includes Jones, Craven, Lenore, and Carteret County. So what that consortium does is they put together the paperwork, and they send out the request for proposals for things like food purchases and supply purchases for the school nutrition group. And by doing it as a group of counties and purchasing at a higher volume, they are able to get better pricing for those goods. So attach to your agenda item that is in the board attachments. There are bids for different companies. One is for food, one is for supplies, one is for milk, one is for produce, and one is for ice cream. You will see that the food bid was submitted to four different vendors, but only one vendor chose to respond. So the consortium chose Cisco of Raleigh for the food purchases. For supplies, they submitted to six companies, and they chose the lower bid, Riverside Paper. For the milk bid, they submitted to two different companies. Maola was the lesser expensive of those two. And then they have one year left on their produce contract with RNH, and one year left on their Hershey's ice cream contract. So we just needed the board to review this bid tab and approve the contract so that they can move into next school year. Do you have any questions that I can answer for you on that?
If there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Okay. The second item I have for you tonight is basically a year-end budget amendment resolution. And I wanted to explain a little bit about what this is. A lot of school districts have noticed that board meetings in June are typically earlier in June. And so there's a lot of activity that happens in the last few weeks of June. For example, we just received a check today for almost two years of Medicaid funding. And so this year-end budget amendment resolution effectively gives the finance officer time to record any year-end closeout entries. So revenues that come in, any expenditures that are still being posted, I'm sure there will be an invoice that comes in on Monday, the 30th, that we still need to pay. So it gives us time to record all of those things to give you a more complete picture of what the year-end has finished at. And then, instead of bringing you a year-end resolution that is an estimate of what I think those numbers will end up being, I can bring you an actual budget amendment that includes everything to close out the fiscal year for '25. So this '24-25 year-end budget amendment resolution basically says that you grant me permission to continue to record year-end entries, including revenues and expenditures through June 30th, and make any correcting entries, and then bring you a budget amendment in the following month to close out the fiscal year 2025. And I feel like that's a more accurate way to do the accounting. Instead of bringing you something in, you know, if we missed a revenue, if a revenue came in after tonight's meeting, I wouldn't be able to add it to the budget. So it would just show that there was more revenue than was budgeted, which is not a huge deal, but it looks better if you can record everything accurately. So this item, 2024-25 year-end budget amendment resolution, is granting permission to do that closeout entry process and then bring you an updated budget amendment to close out the fiscal year in July. It just requires board approval.
And I did review this with Brandon, and so it's not uncommon to do this, so there's no issues on that. If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
The next item is bringing the revised local current expense and capital outlay budgets for fiscal year 2026, and it's based on the actual approved allotments from Pamlico County government. So you'll remember that when we initially went to them, our request was for an increase in local current expense of 5%. They basically gave us a number that was at one of their preliminary meetings, and then they asked Dr. Johnson, you know, would that figure cause us any problems, basically. We did go back to them with a little additional amount that we would need to make sure that things within the local current expense budget weren't too tight, and they granted that additional amount. So this, this local current expense budget reflects an increase of 3%, and it reflects the additional amount that they had agreed and approved at their meeting last week. The local current expense budget, there wasn't a huge amount that we had to trim. There were small things, like we had to make a small reduction in subpay over what we originally projected. We had to make some small reductions in the PD funds that we had available. The main difference in your local current expense and capital outlay budget is the decrease in what was requested for capital outlay. So capital outlay, we had requested $416,491, and we received the same amount in capital as last year. So that amount is $330,470. So we did have to make some reductions to the capital fund budget. We removed the HVAC repairs that were originally in there, because some of that cost can be absorbed through those North Carolina lottery repair and renovation funds. And we did have to reduce the technology budget by about $38,000. Overall, the remainder of the projects that were in the original capital outlay budget are still in the capital outlay budget. But this is adjusting our local current expense and capital outlay budget to the approved amounts from the county commissioners. Can I answer any questions for you about those budgets?
I had a question about, how many students in the Virtual Academy and the Pine Valley? Do you know?
Yes, ma'am. I think there are four.
The Pine Valley Academy.
There are four in Pine Valley, and there is one in the Virtual Academy.
So.
And around 200 at the charter school.
And we have to pay, just like it was a private school?
We have to send them the portion of the money that we receive from the county for those students that don't attend school here. So they're Pamlico County residents. It is, it is based on your receipts from the county, plus any fines and forfeitures money you receive. So you basically calculate it every month based on the number of students we have that month and the number of students they have each month. It's a percentage.
For the Virtual Academy and the Pine Valley?
Yes, ma'am.
That's a lot.
Yes.
And we can't, and we can't, we can't charge any tuition or anything?
A lot of places do charge tuition for out-of-county students. However, they find that depending on the situation, it may negate the benefits of having those students come. So it's kind of a catch-22. Because if you charge them the tuition, you might get the tuition, but you're not going to get the additional funding from the state for counting that student in your ADM. It's not always beneficial.
I think we should look at that, though. That's a lot.
Any other questions?
Any more questions on the budget? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Can I ask one more question? This is kind of like old news, but I'm looking at the, I keep looking at this mower lease. And I'm just curious, does anybody remember roundabout what the contract was like for a mowing company to come in and take care of the grounds? Like, just roughly, was it like $10,000, $100,000?
That lease is actually for a different mower. That lease is for a real mower for the fields upkeep at the high school.
Well, even still, though, do you know what about it costs to have somebody maintain the grounds?
Previously, when we had a mowing contract, I think it was $65,000.
Sixty-some thousand.
For a year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion. Second.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand, and motion carries.
The last item is the budget resolution for fiscal year 2026. This is a requirement by North Carolina General Statute. You have to, the Board of Education has to have a balanced annual budget. And so this document provides you a breakdown of the estimated revenues and expenditures by fund. So if you look at page one and page two of the budget resolution, it lists each fund separately. It lists what our anticipated revenues are. So the state that's on the top of the first page, the $13 million number that is there, is based on our planning allotments that we receive from DPI. And then it breaks down the costs associated with those revenues into instructional, system-wide support services, and ancillary support. Next, you'll see local current expense fund. The $4.8 million that you see there is from the local current expense budget that we just looked at. And then it is broken down between instructional, system-wide support, ancillary, and non-program charges. Same thing with the federal grant funds that are listed below. It's just over $1 million in federal grant funds. They are broken down into the different categories. And that $1,019,000 number came from our federal planning allotments that we received from DPI. The next one is our capital outlay fund that shows our revenues, which is basically the money from the county that they appropriate for us. And on the second page, it shows the breakdown between instructional and system-wide support. Next is the child nutrition fund with a budget of just over $1,040,000. And pretty much all of the charges in child nutrition are directly for child nutrition program services. So the only thing in $8,000 is the indirect cost that we can charge the child nutrition program for serving them in the capacity of running the program, paying the bills, and all the things that go along with that. The last fund there is other local current expense fund, which is our Fund Eight, mainly grant funds in that fund and things like NC pre-K. And that is broken down as well into the different categories of expense. And then when you continue to page three, it gives you greater detail about each fund. So on page three, where you see state public school fund budget resolution at the top, it breaks down each of the individual pots of money within that state number. So that total $13 million, it reflects the $4 million that is in classroom teaching positions, the $786,000 that is in central admin, the $364,000 that's in non-instructional support. So it gives you greater detail about what is anticipated in each part of the state budget. If you look at the bottom, you see the same thing repeated for local current expense. It separates it into the different categories and reflects the same total that you saw on the summary page. Federal grant programs reflect each of those, like vocational ed is our CTE. Oh-49 is IDEA preschool, oh-50 is our Title I. So you'll see that $1,019,000 broken down into the different federal programs. And we repeat the same thing for capital outlay and other local current expense fund at the back. So the total resolution tonight reflects all of the funds and the individual breakdowns within each category. And effectively, what happens is we adopt this in June so that we can begin operations July 1. And as we get accurate numbers from the state, all of this is based on planning allotments for state and federal. The only numbers that we know for certain at this point are the numbers from the county for Fund Two and Fund Four. So as we get more information from the state, if and when they pass a budget and we have actual allotment numbers, I would bring the board adjustments in the following months to update this budget plan to what the state is actually providing. Do you have any questions about the budget resolution?
Any questions? All right, here none, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
And just one follow-up to that. We will be working on the fiscal year 2026 budget book that has all the charts and graphics and all of the things. We've had a couple people ask about it already. So as soon as that is ready, we'll send that out to you all, and it'll be posted on the website as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to governance. Looks like Mr. Rice is going to do the first one.
Yep. One more. I am here to ask for approval for the advanced equipment protection system, the EVOL system. This is a picture of what it'll look like. It'll be a panel in the middle and a pole on the east side, so high that the people walk through. It's purchasing it for the new school, really. But because we're getting it now, we will set up in the high school for next year as a deterrent. We're coming to you to ask for approval because the cost is $112,284.73. This is being paid for with the safety grant that we got back in February, I believe, it was February. And it's a free-flowing system. It's advanced AI technology where, if you remember the old metal detectors that you walked through, you had to empty your pockets on that. You shouldn't have to do that in this. It is able to determine what you have on you and whether they think it's a weapon or not. It stands here, there's a person reading it.
iPad.
Not a laptop, but.
iPad.
Yes. And they get alerted. If they get alerted, then they send the person over to a table to decide where typically your SRO would be or some other faculty member to search the person, see what they have on. Sometimes it's positive, sometimes it's not. That's about all I've got on that. You may have seen them before in, or at amusement parks, some hospitals have them, some ballparks, like major league ballparks and football stadiums and those type of things. Any questions?
So is it one be stationed in the front, or is it?
Well, we'll have one, and in the new school, we're going to have one entrance. So everybody be coming in the front door. Now, next year, we're going to have one, so we're going to put it on the side where the car riders come in on that side. One reason, there's a lot more room to operate it there. And I think more students come in on that side, too.
So again, the cost is being, and the four-year subscription is being covered by the safety grant that we've received. Any questions on this?
So how long is the subscription? Is it one year?
Four years.
Four years?
Yep. Any more questions?
I guess I would just question who would be responsible for overseeing what's coming through the building?
That'll be up to the school administration to determine who's going to be the one stationed there. Typically, it'll probably be a teacher on duty at the iPad, and then probably your school resource officer over to the side to send somebody to that needs to be sent to. We're actually getting some more training on that tomorrow, so.
So all of the cost is through the safety grant? I think it's a good use of the safety grant money, so I would support that.
Any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion second.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries, thank you. All right, Dr. Patrick.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
First, for your consideration, tonight, we have policy 4130, discretionary admission policy. This policy has been revised just so that we can protect our resources and maintain our classroom sizes should there be any districts around us where we may see an influx of students from. I'm asking you to waive your policy tonight that requires a second read and allow us to, allow you to adopt that policy tonight. Any questions regarding the policy? And the policy was in place, it's just a simple revision.
This really just helps to make it a little more clear. And you can see the formal wordings basically said that the board had to determine spaces available in the school system and the particular school or program. Here, we're clarifying, we need to make sure not only do we have size, but also the resources to serve those students that may be applying from outside the district.
Got a question, Kathy?
No, I'm good with it.
Any questions on this? All right, so the first thing we'll have to do is motion to waive board policy 1514, and then entertain a motion to approve as amended. So the first motion I need is a motion to waive board policy 1514, policy adoption or amendment.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, now I need a motion to approve the adoption of policy 4130 as amended.
Motion. Second.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand, and motion carries.
Next item I have for you this evening is a series of policies. These are new additions to the new policy. It is quite a lengthy list. And I do see here on the assembly agenda that you're asked to approve those on first read tonight. However, we'll leave that up to the board's discretion. If you are comfortable approving those tonight on first read, that will allow us to continue to move forward with our revisions to the policy name.
Dr. Patrick, the items that we had previously discussed with the policy committee, all of those changes were made?
Yes, ma'am, all of those changes were made to the policies that were sent to.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Everybody, any other questions or comments? Everyone, I think, appears to be comfortable to do like we just did. So I'll need a motion to waive board policy 1514.
Motion. Second.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. And now I'll need a motion to approve the adoption of the policies as shown on the list that's in our board packet. Do I need to read all those numbers, Rachel?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve, we have a second.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
All right, Mr. Gibbs.
I move that the Pamlico County Board of Education entered into closed session to consider confidential student matters as provided in North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1 and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act 20USC 1232-G and GS 115-C-402. Confidential personnel matters as provided in North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1-5 and 6 and 115-C-319. And to consult with the Board of Education Attorney in order to preserve their attorney-client privilege as provided in General Statute 143-318.11A3.
I have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, we'll be going in closed session at 6:40.
All right, we're back in open session. Got a couple of things we need to take care of. Need a motion to approve the personnel report for action as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Need a motion to approve the out-of-district students.
Motion second.
Motion second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Everybody knows our next meeting dates. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, raise your right hand, and we are adjourned.